All right, I think we'll get started. I didn't receive any Q and A, but please remember everyone to type, if you're joining us via computer, type in your questions in the meeting chat box, and we will get to all of those in order. Also, if you're joining us online, just remember to hit star six to unmute yourself, and then you can join in and pop in in the conversation and ask any questions that you like. I appreciate everyone joining us today. I've had a very busy day as we stay connected with all of our stakeholder groups. Had a call this morning with our superintendents, our local superintendents. Yesterday was with our principals, both elementary, middle, and high school principals. Have been visiting with teachers throughout the day, and we'll have a formal call with our state teacher of the year. So our former teachers of the year that have formed an organization called State Teacher of the Year, North Dakota Chapter, will be visiting with me. And of course, I'll have my student cabinet tomorrow and my family cabinet on Friday. So I'm very thrilled to be with all of you this evening as a, as, as school board members as you make some important decisions moving forward. I'll probably update you on two of the most significant factors that I think we've had the most questions about. The first, before I go into some of the more specific things that DPI is working on. So first and foremost, we have been getting questions about when we are going to see an executive order from our office through the governor's office about the end of year balance, the year-end balances. I know that for smaller school districts, that 35% cap of year-end balance before they begin to see some deductions with our Student Foundation aid formula come into play. So that student, that executive order is ready to go to temporarily suspend the expectation of maintaining a 35% or lower ending year-end balance for our school districts. That order is ready to go. We're waiting on a couple of different orders before we submit those requests to our governor's office. One of those orders that we're waiting for deals with the credentialing expiration for our superintendent's credential, principal's credential, library media credential, counselor credential, as well as Title I coordinators and math coordinators, among others. The third executive order that we're waiting to hear on deals with a question that some of you have had before, our scholarship, our North Dakota academic scholarship and our North Dakota CTE scholarship that we are waiting on. So we're finishing some negotiations with ACT about our work keys, and we believe that we have been able to negotiate an opportunity for our students to take the work keys test at home, to take an at-home administration of the work keys test in order for them to receive their career certificate, career readiness certification. So the National Career Readiness Certification, which is sometimes known as the NCRC, to achieve that. And as soon as we get the final agreement between ACT for that at-home administration of work keys, along with our ACT previously agreed upon testing sites, testing dates, and sites for the ACT administration, we'll submit those three executive order requests to our governor's office to address. So that's where we're at with the executive order for year-end balance. It's still in the works, and we hope to have an answer from the governor once soon after we submit that. The governor's press conference this afternoon essentially provided, there was a question and answer that was asked of our governor's office regarding if school districts might be able to open up at May 1st if a local school district so chooses. And our, this is, this response is a summarization of our, of our governor's answer. And it essentially stated that until now, our, through May 1st, there is, it said, we haven't, so the governor essentially said that he hasn't made that determination yet, and he knows that there are many factors that are in deciding whether to reopen schools. He also understood that he would love to rescue a portion of the senior year for our seniors, but there are risks in putting everyone back in a congregant environment. And he, he did point out that there is no economic challenge to reopening schools at this time. Students are being educated, and teachers, administrators, and school employees are being paid. It's not like bars and restaurants. They're being shut down and earning little, little or no income. He pointed out that students, especially elementary school students, appear to be at low risk for COVID, but teachers, paraprofessionals, and others may be at greater risk, especially if they have underlying conditions like diabetes, heart disease, respiratory disease, et cetera. Some students and educators also may have compromised immune systems or other risk factors. So they are looking every day about how we can improve things forward, be open more instead of more closed, and that's the direction that our governor's office is driving. But for schools right now, there is a lot of complexity, and there are a lot of priorities that he is considering from an economic standpoint. There's no economic challenge right now for him to consider with schools. So that was our governor's response at his press conference earlier today. And I just want to share with you also that even though there doesn't appear to be a change of heart for the governor to address the issue of reopening schools to students, lifting that restricted access to students, the governor's office staff among, along with the Department of Health and the Department of Public Instruction are continuing to look at what a reopening and reentry might look like as we look to determining whether that might be later in May, whether it might be for summer school, or if that reentry may just take place this fall. We're putting together guidance and preparation for our school districts to use as guides in order to allow that reentry whenever that may be. Another thing that I wanted to update the school board members on is our CARES Act. So as I've shared with you last week, $33.3 million is coming to North Dakota schools from the depart, excuse, yeah, from the U.S. Department of Ed through the Congressional CARES Act that was signed into law March 27th by President Trump. I have a call tomorrow afternoon with the U.S. Department of Ed from out in DC, and we hope at that point in time to receive what we have been all anticipating, the application that will finally come to us, providing the guidance that North Dakota will need in order to apply for those funds. DPI, my staff has been working diligently since May, March 27th preparing. So whenever we get that application, we will have a mechanism, we have a mechanism poised and ready to go to turn that around and get that application off on behalf of North Dakota schools and North Dakota students and families and school boards. To, and the Department of Ed promised us a three-day turnaround. So anticipating that we'll get that application off to them on Friday, we hope to have that approval to us no later than midweek next week. And then we in turn have a swift process and bureaucratic red tape free certification that we will send out to our local LEAs to return to us, to apply and return to us. And we too promise that three-day turnaround to our LEAs. So that's kind of an update on the big picture questions of what's happening with funding and/or the status of COVID closure to our school districts. I'm going to pause there before I go into some maybe more day-to-day detail of operations and see if there's any questions that might be in the chat box or asked verbally online.
Am I unmuted?
You are, we can hear you.
Great, so this is more of a long-range question, and I know, you know, if you had a crystal ball, you, you may not be serving in the role that you are and be doing something even more fabulous. But, you know, CDC is coming out and talking, you know, about the potential for a second wave. And as a school board member, I'm curious what sort of long-range planning? I mean, I know the first hurdle is opening schools again for the first time, but is there already some background planning going around in the capital area about what happens if there is a second wave? And how should we as school board members and districts be thinking about that in terms of fall?
Yes, I appreciate your foresight. I appreciate your, your anticipation of that. It's very wise. Blue season generally starts the first week of October in North Dakota. And so anticipating a reopening late August, September, we're very well aware as North Dakotans that we may need to, we may need to redeploy our distance learning in October or November if there's that second surge. We've had pretty good experience in planning. I think the, the, the distance learning plans that your school districts submitted this first time for distance learning are a great start. And I don't anticipate that we would require any school district to, to have a wholesale change in what that was. We also know that your teachers and your administrators, building principals, and all of the leaders, your community have probably recognized things in their distance learning plan that they'll, that they want to change, maybe have already changed. As the state superintendent, we would open, we would, we would encourage you to open those district plans, those distance learning plans up again and see what might be changed. And, but we would not be, we would not expect you to be exhaustive or extensive in that. So I, as a school board, would be thinking about what that might mean and how you might do things differently. What worked well this spring? And what will you want to change in the event that we have to close again this fall? Regarding the funding, your school district, the, if you're interested, I think I mentioned this last week, if you're interested in, and are curious about what your school district may be receiving with these CARES dollars, our, our DPI website has under CARES Act funding, sub relief funding, has a printout of what each school district, the anticipated amount that each school district will be receiving. So as you do some budgeting and planning, be mindful of the fact that those CARES dollars don't have to be immediately expended. In fact, you have, every school district has until September 2021 to allocate any of those CARES dollars. So that's the official cutoff date. But in reality, if we draw closer to September 2021 and school districts haven't allocated those funds, I will have the ability and the authority to ask for an extension of a whole other year, a whole another year of allocation opportunities. So in reality, school boards can look at those CARES dollars and say, we truly have until September 2022 to allocate these funds. So I would be mindful of the fact that you may not know what the full ramification of this COVID-19 is going to have on your school district. Some of those unanticipated costs may yet to come in this winter. So I would kind of use this time to be working with your stakeholder groups to identify what is going well and what you might want to change, what the costs are and what they have been, and see if you might need to anticipate for some of those this fall as well. The state planning for this is occurring. As I talk about the reentry and reopening guidance that we are putting together, we will be putting that together with state agencies, with our Department of Commerce, Department of Health, DPI, and the governor's office. And we will be sharing it with you. I hope to share some of those preliminary draft guidance with school board members on these Wednesday evening calls to seek your feedback. Working with Alexis at NDSBA to have another vehicle to seek feedback of things that we might be missing. But we'll be covering things in there, not only academic things of distance learning, but also what does it look like to begin those bus routes again? If social distancing is still recommended, how do we, what, how many students can, can suitably be on a bus at a given time? If the recommendation from CDC remains this fall that we have masks, that our students and teachers be wearing masks during the day, where are the resources? What are the places that school, local school districts can go to through our Department of Health and their, their, their public health districts to get enough masks in place to be, you know, have a, have a reusable cycle or replenishing of that supply chain every week for our school districts? So that's what that guidance is being worked on right now among those agencies. So we will be able to give that to local leaders, and those local leaders can plan for reentry and plan for another disruption and a transition to distance learning if necessary. Long answer, but a very good question and a super complex question. Any others?
Hi, my question is kind of on the flip side of the reentry. For the remainder of this school year, our district is kicking around, you know, saying that we're just going to finish out this school year on our distance learning plans like we've been doing for the last few weeks here. Is there any guidance that would suggest we shouldn't do that? Like if the governor says that we could reopen our schools if we want, we don't want to be conflicting with, with what he suggests to do. But the way we're looking at it is there'll be a certain percentage of our kids that probably won't come back, that our, that parents won't want them to come back. So then we'll have to have our teachers do a distance learning plan for them anyway and teach kids in school. I guess kind of looking for some suggestions of if that would be something we would want to shy away from or if that's an option we can actually entertain so then people sort of have, I know, closure for how the rest of this year is going to pan out?
Yeah, I, I would say that you're certainly on the right train of thinking. You're, you're on, I, I can't speak for the governor, but I would say that I, I don't, I don't see, even if the governor would open up the restricted access to school buildings, I do not see the governor prohibiting the, the continuation of distance learning to conclude, to finish out a school year. And to put this into some perspective, I ran some numbers this weekend and shared them with the governor earlier this week. After this week, 4,000 of our students are in school districts that only have three weeks of school left anyway. So about three, about 4% of our students are in those school districts. 75,000 of our students, so two-thirds of our students are in schools where they, after this week, they only have four weeks of school left after today. And then the final third, the final 35, 34,000 of our school district, our students are in school districts that only have five weeks of school left after this week. And so the governor truly understands that not only is it, does it take time to transition into distance learning, it takes time to transition out of distance learning. And I happened to be on a radio show, The Scott Hennan Show, this week or on Monday, and we put, we, we posted the conversation about that. And there was a long, a long discussion, Facebook dialogue among community members, parents, and teachers. And many of the comments shared that same sentiment that said, even if my school opened up, I wouldn't send my child. And so that puts your teachers in a real difficult position of they're teaching classes during the day and still maintaining distance learning, which is a huge burden on, on any single teacher at this point in time. So those are just some of the facts that the governor is mulling over right now. But to, to answer your question, if, if he did open up his schools and your school district said, no, we're just going to maintain our distance learning through our May 22nd calendar date, I, I can't speak for the governor, as I said, but I'd be very surprised if he wouldn't continue to count that for instructional time and let you, let that local school district make that decision. One of the things I also, speaking of Facebook, I also wanted to point out that many of you are like the families that are trying to manage this whole facilitation of learning. Our family cabinet has created a Facebook group dedicated just to a forum of family members that are sharing tips and tricks and resources and ideas and lending support to say, hey, I see these great put-together families out there, and they have everybody around the kitchen table. That's not what my house looks like. It's crazy. And so it's just kind of a, an online support group, if you will. I'd encourage you to share that out with any of your Facebook friends. Right now, we have over 400 family members that are just talking back, that have joined that group and are talking back and forth, sharing resources. So if you could share that within your communities, that, that'd be, that'd be great and super helpful. I think that this is something that might be helpful even in the absence of a pandemic. Any other questions or comments?
So Kirsten, this is Donna. We've got some live Q and As. Do you see that or do you need them read?
I don't see that. So yes, if you could, if you could share them, that'd be great. If you could read them out loud, I'll try and answer them. And you're muted again, Donna.
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
I think you addressed this one, but I'll still, I'll still obviously verbalize it. Do you anticipate the reopening of schools to be more a local decision or state?
So I, I think that for the remainder of the school year, if there is a consideration on the governor's office that is in regard to this school year, I, I think that he would allow a local decision to remain distance learning. If we are talking, if we move through the school year and there isn't a reopening, I think you can anticipate a statewide executive order lift or expiration that may include some guidance and expectation of the governor of what a school district must do to reopen in the fall or for summer school.
Next one.
Yeah, so I think, just to, just to make sure that I'm clarifying that, for the 1920 school year, I believe if the governor does lift the restriction of school access, he would still allow local, local school district autonomy to continue the year using distance education. After the 1920 school year, as we move into a summer school session or a 2021 school year decision, I think you'll see statewide guidance from the governor.
Next question. Do you have guidance for schools for graduation? Our superintendent told me he wishes to hold graduation on May 24th as we had originally planned, although this still is just a thought at this time.
So there is no statewide guidance on graduation. We are hoping school boards will work with their communities to make that decision within the law of the executive order. So as it stands today and tonight, school buildings and school, public school property, which would include football fields, baseball diamonds, all sorts of outdoor, is still closed to student access. So if the graduation plans would include any public school facility, that would not be allowable under the current executive order. I've heard of some other inventive ideas. Particularly, these are maybe our smaller schools that have, you know, maybe eight graduates that they may be using a church that where they would allow a mom, a dad, and the graduate to come in and make sure that they're sitting six feet apart from each. So I've heard of some community centers that might be used with those same stipulations of the governor's, no more than 10 people convening in, in a space, no more, you know, six, and still the social distancing rules apply. But it is really totally a local school district decision. And I, I would encourage that innovative thinking and problem solving for unique community solutions.
Okay, the next question, and Alexis may be able to help you with this. How can we hold an open meeting for, say, a superintendent hiring? Keep it an open meeting, but not use any type of virtual meeting?
I'm gonna, I will kick that over to Alexis with the open meetings guidance.
Hi Kirsten, this is Alexis. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, I apologize. I've got barky dog, so I'm always muted. So the question was how to hold a public meeting when interviewing a superintendent candidate? Was that correct?
In the search for, I believe, right, Donna?
When hiring a superintendent? Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the interviews, your, your interviews are subject to, to open meeting laws. You would conduct that just like you, if you need to have that interview remotely, you would conduct it just like you would conduct any other board meeting remotely, providing that login or call-in information on your posting. We do have some districts that are interviewing that have opted to do the interviews in person still. In doing that, they have still provided a streaming option so that folks can, can maintain social distance if they want. But then they have opted to host those interviews in the gymnasium versus maybe a boardroom compared to normal so that there's far more room for people to spread out and maintain a safe distance.
I, I think that's good. And I think the only thing that I would add to that is if you are doing it virtually, you have to make it available to the public virtually. If you're doing it face-to-face, then you have to do it, allow access to the public in the same manner in which you are meeting. So.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good clarification, Kirsten.
And so if you are doing it personally, you must do it in a, an area that would still comply with the governor's executive orders. Next question, Donna?
The next question was, what is the name of the Facebook group again?
Sure.
Um, it is North Dakota Family, it's North Dakota Family Engagement. And Patty Carmichael also put in this section the, the, the link to the site. So if you want to talk more about that?
Sure, absolutely. So it's, you just go to Facebook and it's NDPI, Facebook Family Engagement. So I'm going to go to Facebook right now, so I'm walking you through this. And boy, I'm dangerous when I go on Facebook. So. And we'll have Patty send that out to the group and send it to Alexis so she can possibly put a link to it as well. So, Patty, can you read the actual description of what that Facebook group is? Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we have one last question on the live Q and A, which I think you addressed, but let's revisit this. I thought last week you mentioned that the distance learning plan would count towards school hours even if the governor would allow schools back in session. Is that not the case?
So that's, so that's what I do anticipate. So read the question one more time, Donna.
I thought last week you mentioned that the distance learning plan would count towards school hours even if the governor would allow schools back in session. Is this not the case?
So that's where I'm saying. I can't speak for the governor, and he has the only, he is the only one that would be able to make that final determination. But again, it's, it's, I would be extremely surprised if the governor wouldn't allow these last three, four, and five weeks. Well, first of all, the social distancing is completely, it's, it's in place until at least May 1st. So with that, we only have maybe seven days for some schools, 12 days for others, and 17 days of school for all of our school districts at best. So I don't believe that this governor would force schools to reconvene and, and have them move away from distance learning. But the only person that can say that with certainty is the governor.
That's all the questions on the live Q and A?
Okay. And so to provide a little bit more insight and background, I am working with the governor's office to hopefully provide some clarity and some announcement on the governor, from the governor about the remainder of this school year. He is dealing with tracing, testing, and treatment right now. That is, and then the economy. So we are understanding of that. But I do know that the governor's office does understand the communication that I'm getting and some specific certainty. So I can do more than just say, I can't save. So I can do more than just say, I can't say for certain, but I believe that this is how the governor would feel. So working on that diligently. Any other questions? Uh, none for online? How about, um, on the phone?
Hey Kirsten, this is Alexis. Um, I, I just wanted to follow up on, on that comment about open meetings, one more piece. Um, we kind of talked at the end about if you wanted to hold it in person, you needed to make sure it was available for people to attend in person. And, and while that's true, we have also, or it, that is true. We have also gotten guidance from the Attorney General's Office, um, and that's on our website, that really, really, really strongly encourages you, even if you have it in person and make that available, to make, make a remote option also available for your patrons. Um, you know, you may have patrons that are, you know, compromised or just don't feel comfortable coming out. Um, and because we are under social distancing guidance or recommendations, um, it, it, providing both options to your patrons versus just in person, um, is more of an effort to keep it open and the recommendation from the Attorney General's Office that we've gotten. So, um, i- if you're doing it in person, also make it available to your patrons in person. But we would strongly encourage you to provide a digital option as well.
Very good. Hey Alexis, I have another question. Um, yeah. That, that is, is along this line. So let's say that there's a, you know, it's a virtual and or it's a, it's a meeting held in public. Essentially, I was part of, when, uh, we convened the Board of Higher Ed Committee to select the candidate names to move forward to the school, to the, um, governor for the Board of Higher Ed. And, um, so working with the, so the members of that committee are state superintendent, chief justice of the Supreme Court, um, president, Senate President Protam, Speaker of the House, and then a member of, um, the ND United, or the president of ND United. So we held our meeting, the majority of us were face to face in a room, social distancing. But one member called in and we opened it to the public um, through a dial-in Teams meeting. And the chief justice, um, as we were working through that, every member that called in, every number that called in needed to identify themselves for the record. Is there any type of expectation or stipulation where if a board was meeting and they had dial-in, uh, random anonymous numbers, that there would be an expectation of announcing themselves so there would be a record of who was in attendance at that meeting?
So we have not, not had any, any guidance that we've received from the Attorney General's Office, uh, that would indicate that. Um, you know, if you wanted to show up in person, uh, right, during regular times, you would not necessarily have to announce your name. You could just sit quietly in the back of the room. Um, and so, so I guess, I guess my answer is no. We haven't received that guidance, um, or, or interpreted any of our, uh, executive session code changes that way. Um, we may be, uh, recommend, or I definitely recommend having a business manager or administrative assistant running that call so that you can monitor those participants. Um, and, and that's more so a disruption issue. Um, making sure everybody's muted like they should be, making sure nobody, um, is, i- if you've allowed them to have video, um, nobody's doing inappropriate things. Just, just like you would monitor attendees at a normal meeting. If somebody is disruptive, you can ask them to leave. Um, if somebody is disruptive remotely, you can ask them to leave. But, but no, we have not heard nor, um, seen anything in code that would indicate there is an obligation of a district to, um, require folks to, to announce themselves.
Very good. Thanks. Just curious. That was interesting for me too, so.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah. Any other questions online? Or, um, on telephone?
Hello, can you hear me Kirsten?
I sure can. Good evening.
All right, yeah, first of all, uh, you know, some of the larger school districts actually broadcast our meetings, so they're actually on television. And there's no way we'd know who's watching. So I seriously doubt there's any requirement to have an identifying me- message there. But mostly I wanted to thank you and the entire DPI team for all the work you're doing in this kind of interesting time period. We have troubled waters and you're charting a course for us. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Thanks Jim, I appreciate that. Never thought about the, the whole, um, television, of course. That's, that's of course true, you know? Um, good point, and thank you. Um, the DPI team is a remarkable team and we're very, we're truly honored to be able to serve our students and our families and our boards. It's, I think, as troubled as this is, I think there was an opportunity for us to, to maybe reset and rebirth public education. And I think it's certainly brought forward the extreme relevance and importance of public education in all of our communities. So, um, there, there is a silver lining in all of this, but thanks. Any other on the telephone? I'm just gonna share a couple more updates, um, with all of you that are relevant to, to, but, to board work and, um, the, the, the work that you all are doing as far as policy and budgets. Um, so today, our child nutrition staff met with some of the food service directors from North Dakota's larger districts. Seven districts were represented on, and on average, these districts combined are serving more than 11,000 breakfasts and lunches every day. Several districts plan to start serving weekend meals starting this Friday, and the meals for Saturday and Sunday will be distributed with the Friday meals. Most of the districts that were on this call plan to continue to serve meals into summer if USDA extends the current COVID waivers for non-congregate meals, the eli- area eligibility requirements and the mealtime restrictions. So most districts do plan to continue as summer meal food distribution sites. But there has been the question to us, if a school district is currently operating under one of those waivers and they do not want to continue to be a food distribution site into the summer, are they required to? And the answer is no. You do not need to continue to be a few dis- food distribution site into the summer. So, uh, one thing that you should know is the availability of these waivers, those three waivers that I mentioned into the summer is currently not certain. They, they are set to expire June 30th. So our child nutrition office is, is working diligently with, uh, Washington, with our congressional delegation. Senator Hoven is part of that, um, you, the agricultural committee. And we are working, you know, to get that extended to continue through this pandemic. And we're waiting for further guidance from USDA on that. So a couple of the concerns that were raised during this meeting were, first, um, many of you are doing your budgeting right now. And there is that question that, about when you return to school in the fall, in school buildings, will the social distancing requirements or expectations still be in place? Um, so will we allow them to congregate in commons areas like our cafeterias? Or will they be serving meals in classrooms? Or will it just be a continued service of grab and go meals? Because whatever decisions those are will impact what food items are purchased and served and what supplies will need to be purchased for the fall. So currently, food service directors across the state are in the process of developing menus and bidding food contracts with a value of over a million dollars in some cases. So it's important that these school, school food services are, are, are involved in our back to school plan. So that was a big aha moment for us. So in addition to creating guidance on how do you clean your buildings? Where do you get face masks? What's the, how many people can be on a bus? We also realized that we need to bring in those food service directors sooner rather than later as we make the decisions about what our reentry, uh, guidelines will be and expectations will be. So the second concern that our school district food service programs, um, brought up is that the majority of them are self-funding. So school food service funds in most cases are paying for the salaries for all of the school food personnel, even if they're not working. So even though districts are serving meals and they get reimbursed by USDA for the meals, that amount of revenue coming in is significantly less than a normal school year. So even though the cost of the meals are being covered, the cost of the su- food service personnel were covered by what was normally being charged for, um, uh, for school breakfast and for school lunch. And as you all know, that is significantly reduced. So this is draining the majority of food service accounts across the state with lea- leaving little or no reserve to implement what may be new and socially distanced food service operations, which could require new equipment, new supplies, extended mealtimes and potentially more staff if those are put into place. So I wanted to remind all of you that, um, to, back to where we began with the COVID Dollar Cares Act and how are we planning for a, maybe a subsequent interruption? Those COVID Cares Act dollars may be, it may be necessary for school districts to, um, consider using some of those funds to support the school food service operations even in reentry and for any potential, um, interruptions or disruptions going forward. So, um, just wanted to provide an update on that and let, seeing if any of you, if that sparked any new questions. During that, I want to give a shout out to all of you. Um, and I think North Dakota should be very, very proud. Um, I've done several, um, or at least a couple national, um, interviews regarding, um, the way that we were one of the only states in the nation and certainly the first to ensure that all of our students were on a full continuation of learning. I have a friend, um, in Spokane, who's, uh, the school district dismissed in early March. And Spokane School District has yet to, um, have any implementation of learning for their students. Philadelphia is the same way. Many states have just begun learning. So very good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. Um, you as school board members, I, I understand and appreciate that more than any as you represent your taxpayers in your communities. Eight point six million dollars every day is what is distributed in state funding and state and local funding to, um, continue school in the state. You as school board leaders have not walked away from eight point six million dollars going to schools every day and said, let's just quit. You have said how, we have to make sure that we're delivering the service that our taxpayers expect to get from that investment in public education. So I wanted to, to share that with you. I also wanted to share with you the, uh, wonderful position that we are in, in North Dakota. Only 0.2% of our students' homes don't have broadband access. That's not, and that's a true dedication to our rural telecommunications companies that exist out there. And, um, those that have, have really stepped up to, to make sure our kids are connected. I want to ask you, um, to help us celebrate the profession of teaching in public education if we can. It's my goal to have a teacher of the year candidate from every one of our 53 counties for this year. We have extremely drastically minimized the first round of teacher of the year nomination and application forums. So if you know a teacher within your school district, within your county, that deserves to be nominated, please know that it's a simple, efficient application nomination process for this first round. We want 53 county teachers to be recognized. Right now, we only have 16 counties represented. We have 22 applicants or 22 nominations from 16 counties. I'm gonna read these counties, and if you don't hear your name, I'm going to ask you to seek out one of your teachers and consider nominating them. McKenzie, so these are the counties that are, have applicants. McKenzie, McHenry, Stark, Montreal, Cass, Foster, Burley, Nelson, Grand Forks, Morton, Stutzman, Richland, Adams, McLean, Ward, Barnes. One more time, more quickly. McKenzie, McHenry, Stark, Montreal, Cass, Foster, Burley, Nelson, Grand Forks, Morton, Stutzman, Richland, Adams, McLean, Ward and Barnes. The deadline for these nominations is May 8th. And once this is all over, I will come out to your school, I'll come out to your county to recognize these teachers. Um, this is a time now more than ever that I think we, uh, as I said, can celebrate public education. And certainly, education as a whole in general, um, for our nation. Any other, any questions on that or any other?
Kirsten, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what if our school's name is not on the CARES Act relief funding allocation?
Okay, very good. So there are 16 school districts that, so the CARES Act funding allocation is, um, distributed based on, uh, the federal Title I allocation. So if you are a school district that does not receive Title I funding, there are 16 of them. And I will, um, read those off to you right now. Um, the 16 school districts that aren't covered under the, uh, federal distribution formula are Apple Creek, Baker, Billings County, Fordville-Lankin, Fort Ransom, Halliday, Horse Creek, Kinsel, Little Heart, Lone Tree, Manning, Marmouth, Monocan, Munich, Notton, Sweetbryer. So those are the 16 school districts that aren't, uh, under the formula. We have, um, Assistant Superintendent Matsky and I have worked with our fiscal agent and been approved by US Department of Education as approved of, of allowability to do this. We are going to use some of our S E A set aside dollars to make sure that those school districts also receive CARES funding. You, each of your school, uh, whether it be a principal, um, your school administrator, will make sure that we include the board president, uh, in, because we have the board president, uh, email information. You'll be receiving a message, uh, early next week about, uh, with the amount of what that allocation will be for your school district. We understand that just because you're not a Title I school, doesn't mean you haven't been impacted by COVID and we will make sure that you too receive some assistance. Good question. Other questions? Alexis, um, any other thing that you'd like to share? Or, um, before I, I have one final, um, thing that I'd like to read from a teacher, um, to all of you.
Hi Kirsten, no, nothing, nothing new to add. Just, uh, thank you again to you and your team and then to all of the board members who called on tonight.
Thanks Alexis. So I appreciate that very much Alexis. Again, I just can't say enough about our partnership with the School Boards Association. I'm very grateful. Um, hopefully we'll have some more CARES Dollar information next week and maybe a little bit more certainty about where we're at for the rest of the school year and summer school and or reopening. But I want to end with this, and some of you may have seen it on Facebook and or Twitter. It was shared with, uh, with me by a North Dakota teacher in one of our small, more isolated school districts that many of you likely represent. There, they could be the school district that you represent. She wanted to make sure that I knew that she didn't write it, but, um, it really reflected how she felt. So as I said, many of you are likely, um, if not parents yourselves or grandparents, at least a family member, you all understand what, what our families are going through. And so, uh, this letter is an open letter to parents. April 2020, dear parents, don't stress about schoolwork. In September, I will get your children back on track. I am a teacher and that's my superpower. What I can't fix is social emotional trauma that prevents the brain from learning. So right now, I just need you to share your calm, share your strength and share your laughter with your children. No kids are ahead, no kids are behind. Your children are exactly where they need to be. With love, all the teachers on planet Earth. So I do want to say to all of you that there might be some significant concerns about what may or may not be happening, what should be happening. Those kids that needed additional help and were falling behind before are struggling even more now. I, I have trust and confidence in the teachers that you've hired and I know that they care and will get them on track. But I, what I also want to share with you is the work that we're doing at the Department of Public Instruction to communicate with our, our legislators, our lawmakers and our community in general that once we go back in general, that once we go back to school, whenever that might be, things aren't going to be the same, and we aren't going to be able to pick up right where we left off. Our families are doing tremendous heroic work, our school board members, our leaders, our teachers, our school nutrition people, they're doing heroic work, but there will be a toll, there will be some things that we need to address and some things that we need to face, and that's just the reality. But the entire world is experiencing this. And I want to share with you from my vantage point, that North Dakota is better positioned than not only other nations, better positioned than most states in this nation for some reasons that I've mentioned before. Before this pandemic hit, I was working with the US Department of Ed and on a national level to look at the way we measure school quality differently. And I believe now that this pandemic didn't put us behind that work, this pandemic has actually accelerated the opportunity for North Dakota to be a leader in what DPI is going to do to show the Department of Ed, and show Washington, and show the rest of the nation that the way that we measure quality schools isn't based on one test score one time a year. So we continue to do that work, I'll continue to do that work after this pandemic is over, and I want all of you to know that that's the work that we will provide, and I believe that when this is over, we are going to use the suspension of our state assessment to our advantage. We have one year to be able to really meet children where they are, and we are setting things in motion, positioning your school district leaders and your teachers, your building principals, to really take advantage of this. And at the end of this year, we will have a great body of evidence to show DC and show even our local, our state legislators, that we can measure quality differently, we can measure learning differently based on what we really value in North Dakota. So thank you for your work of keeping the trains running on schedule and on the track sometimes in your local school districts, and I look forward to sharing some more information with you next week. Please, in the interim, reach out to Alexis, she'll get your questions to me, reach out directly to us, we'll get those answered, and we'll provide whatever support we can. We work for you, we're here to support you and your leaders and your students. Thanks so much. Thanks Patty, thanks Donna, thanks Alexis.